We will be having our actual egg hunt for all children ages zero to 12 years old.
Having this event here definitely brings a lot of awareness to the programming classes that we do offer here on a year-round basis. So our main focus is, you know, to keep the families together, bring them out for a special time. That way, everyone can have fun.
Over at Exposition Park, folks enjoy their own spring festival which feature family fun, including rides, live music, balloon making, and lots of roses.
Expo Center holds an annual spring festival, so we thought it'd be great this year to host it in the Exposition Park Rose Garden. I mean, we have over 60,000 different types of roses. This is a very historic garden, and it's operated and owned by the City of Los Angeles, Department of Recreation and Parks. And so, we thought it'd be great for folks to come in and smell the roses and just have a lot of fun.
Besides your presentation, what was the highlight of the day?
Being able to take pictures here by the fountain and enjoy the flowers, be here as a group. It's our first time being here as a whole group and taking these lovely pictures.
My first years, I never been here, and the roses, but the roses, but this event is beautiful for the family and entertainment for the kids is fun. I love it.
In Lincoln Heights, a brand-new playground is brightening the neighborhood and encouraging outdoor play.
Three, two, one, go!
I started in the department 30 years ago. In 1990, this was my second assignment, so this is very special to me, and this community will always be special to me.
We hosted a community meeting here, and the community was very excited about this new playground.
You know, as a five-years-old, they love parks. They need to be outside, and there's not that many around in this block, so...
To be able to dedicate this wonderful structure, the shade, the kids do not have to be in the sun, they can play all day.
The community of Lincoln Heights said, "You know what? We want this playground to be interactive, we want it to be quality, and we want it to be accessible for children in this community that we know are living with disabilities."
Look here, what you've done, from a dusty little place that nobody cared to play, it has turned into a beautiful, beautiful treasure. And so, to see these young kids now play, I feel like being a little kid. I wish I could be their age, I can enjoy this beautiful park.
This park serves as a social recreational fixture in the community, and we're happy to support many adventures and friendships that will be made here.
My son is five, so he's very excited. We've been waiting for quite some time.
The LAPD Museum puts on a carnival for the community, a new furry member joins the LA Zoo family, and Westwood gets a new stop sign. All this in City Beat.
LAPD's Northeast Division recently held a community carnival in Glosel Park. Proceeds benefited the LAPD Museum. Both kids and families enjoyed rides, games, and naturally yummy funnel cake. The LA Zoo recently added a member to its family with the birth of a new female zebra, Foal. The first such birth since 1988, the zoo welcomes visitors to come say hello to the cute new baby girl. And Fifth District Councilmember Paul Corretts recently welcomed a new stop sign to the intersection of Kelton and Massachusetts in Westwood. A recent surge in traffic has led to a surge in accidents, and the new signage will help to curtail that.
They don't have to watch for somebody plowing through at 60 miles an hour. Now, there will be much greater safety.
The ribbon is cut, and it's time to play hoops. LA's all-girl Sacred Heart High School celebrates a brand-new gymnasium.
This gym has been in the making for 20, 25, 30 years, and it's a huge achievement for us. We were one of the only Catholic all-girls school in the archdiocese without a gym.
I was a student athlete, so having to practice at Lincoln Park and having to have our games there was difficult just because we wouldn't get a lot of support because it was off-campus. So the fact that it's on-campus now, the girls will be able to have support from their fellow comments.
We believe that young girls and young women deserve that same opportunity as young boys and men, and so, we're just happy that now we have this over here on the east side of the city.
We cannot wait to make new memories in our brand-new gymnasium.
Coming to Sacred Heart without a gym was still a great experience, but having a gym is just an extra wow.
Sacred Heart is a place where our teachers, staff, and coaches encourage us to be the best versions of ourselves possible.
Thank you to everyone who helped this dream of ours come true.
Enjoy free pancakes during the pop-up art show, raise awareness on homelessness while listening to stories from those living on the streets, and enjoy the cultural diversity of a Southeast European Film Festival. All this and things to do.
Don't miss the return of the Los Angeles Pancakes and Booze Art Show. This underground pop-up art show celebrates 10 years of serving free pancakes and introducing SoCal residents to some of the nation's leading emerging artists. This two-day event will include body painting, live DJs, and more. It's all happening at the Los Angeles Pancakes and Booze Art Show, May 3rd and 4th, beginning at 8:00 p.m. The show is set to take over Lot 613 located at 613 Imperial Street. For more details, check out their listing on Eventbrite.com. Homeward L.A. is gearing up to take over LA Performance Spaces. This traveling theater company will put up a series of productions featuring monologues based on stories from people who have experienced homelessness. Funds raised from the event will go to the Midnight Mission. So do your part to support homelessness awareness and the arts by attending Homeward L.A. Production begins April 26 and runs through May 5. For performance times and venues, visit homewardla.org. Travel halfway around the globe without leaving your hometown. The 14th Annual Southeast European Film Festival can take you there. This film festival showcases the cultural diversity of Southeast Europe and fosters cultural exchange through its annual presentations of films from that region. Sneak a peek at how the other half lives at the Southeast European Film Festival, happening May 1st through the 8th. For a complete listing of festival programs and venues, visit seafestla.org. And that's a look at some things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Wemema Rashid. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next week for more LA This Week.
Good morning, good morning. Please take a seat. It's Wednesday, May 1st. I want to welcome you to City Hall, to the Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you call a roll?
Bloomingfield Bonin, Biscayne, Osidio, Harris Dawson, Weiser Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Smith, Weston. Ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Smith moves. Mr. Weston seconds. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Bloomingfield moves. Ms. Martinez seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, Items 1 through 16 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do we have cards on these items?
There are cards on Items 1, 2, and 6.
Okay, let's hold those items and prepare to vote on the remaining items. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Continue.
And, Mr. President, those ordinances will be held over one week unless reconsidered with 12 members.
Okay.
Items 17 through 36 are items for which public hearings have been held. There is a request to hold Item 19 on the desk.
Okay, let's hold that. Ms. Martinez?
36 special.
And we'll hold 36 as well. Now, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That brings us where?
And, Mr. President, again, those ordinances will be held over unless reconsidered later today.
Well, I'm optimistic we'll hit the number we need to hit, and we'll address those issues. That brings us where?
Mr. President, Items 37 through 45 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold those on the desk?
Okay, at this point, why don't we just hold those for a second? So that brings us where?
And that takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment.
All right, let's begin with multi-general public comment. Mr. Previn, I saw him earlier. Mr. Krikorian, did you want to say something before we get into this?
Well, thank you, Ms. President. If you wanted to revisit Items 37 through 45...
I'm going to have somebody talk to your staff on those items right now, and then we'll revisit them.
Very good, thank you.
But let me bring up Mr. Previn. Mr. Previn, you have Items 1A through C, Item 2... Yeah, Mr. Previn signed up for Items 1A through 1C, Item 2, and general public comment. So, Mr. Previn, come forward.
Sir, that's an inaccurate assessment of what I signed. I signed up on the closed-session items.
Mr. Previn, the hearing...
Closed-session items have already been... The public comment's been satisfied, correct?
Correct.
But you know that he's going to announce some details.
No, Mr. Previn, we're not going to go back and forth. You can speak on Items 1A through 1C, Item 2, and then general public comment.
Okay, I'd like to thank the LA DWP Legislative Group. Yeah, you can start it right away. No rush, sir, because you're lying to the people about what...
No, Mr. Previn, do you want to just go straight to your general public comment, then speak on Items 1A through 1C, and then Item 2?
I feel that 1A and 1C, these are about nuisance properties, and I believe it's about, you know, nuisance properties, you can get some kind of injunctive relief against people to make them stop doing it, but once they stop doing it, as the city attorney has pointed out, there's not much that can be done. And Bloomingfield was very upset because he really wants to find a way to go civilly after people more aggressively, and I think that that's, you know, coming from a guy who feels that...
Items 1A through 1C.
Sir, you're into... Now, you're cutting my mic. Sir, you're in bad area, okay? Let me finish, I'm talking.
Mr. Previn, do you want to go... In fact, let's give Mr. Previn, you've been warned several times, you would not cooperate, so we're going to give you your one minute for general public comment. Give him his one minute.
Terrible area, sir, bad area. You shouldn't be shutting down someone talking about nuisance properties, and I'm entitled to speculate about my feelings about what you've been doing in these liens, and I'm the same guy who talked about these liens. Is this my general public comment?
Yes.
Oh, okay, then restore my time. This is an unbelievable outrage. Okay, you want to restore my time? Okay, well, I'd like to talk about, I watched the city attorney's presentation from the budget yesterday, and they're calling what could be multiple days of meetings, one special meeting with... meeting with one agenda item. That is a false understanding of the special meeting law. I'm a guy who just won at the appellate court with my attorney on the special meeting rule. Mr. Sadio can look down and bring it to his Civil Rights Commission along with you, but you guys are in 100% violation of the public's right to communicate here, and to do what you did just now, when I know that there's a Mayling increase of $400,000 on top of the 100. I have things that I want to talk about, and that's in the outside council thing, but I also want to talk about the closed sessions, and you don't read the information, so no one can...
Thank you, Mr. Previn, thank you very much. Mr. Previn, now you're disrupting the meeting.
No, I'm not, there's no meeting.
Okay, Madam Clerk, why don't we quickly vote on items 1 and 2? Let's open the roll.
Excuse me, Mr. President. For item 1, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that 1A be received and filed as it is determined to be owner-occupied property, 1B be received and filed, and 1C that the lien be reduced by $4 and confirmed.
Okay, let's vote on those items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Do we have Rita here on item 6? Rita on item 6? Okay, let's vote on item 6. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now I want to call up Susan Hunter, Miki Jackson. We're going to do some general public comment.
Good morning, Miki Jackson, Healthy Housing Foundation, Housing is a Human Right. I want to talk in a general fashion today about issues of transparency. Items keep coming up on council, you know, that have to do with that, and it's kind of being piecemealed, which is, I suppose, better than nothing, but I really think that this council needs to get very serious about putting in a lot of disclosure. There should be more disclosure than just if, say, foreign governments are involved. There should be a lot more disclosure about developer money, about money that is involved with items put forward. I would like to go so far as to see that disclosed per item, perhaps in writing or perhaps verbally. There are institutions that do that, and it is very good when they do.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Susan Hunter, Housing is a Human Right, and I'm here today to say thank you for making sure that we can have some transparency in who is affecting our local elections. I would also ask that City Council, or perhaps even Kern Price himself, call for an investigation into his Pub 700s so that we can have a very clear investigation into the confusion that is on his tax documents and to make sure that there is real transparency. If there's nothing, there's no problems, there's no concerns, then this shouldn't be an issue, it shouldn't be hard to do, and I hope that this is something that City Council would consider doing to gain back public trust. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Major Dotson and Jose Dunas, please come forward. Please come forward. Yes, sir.
Yes, we just like, would like for...
Identify yourself.
Oh, my name is Major Dotson, and we'd like to congratulate Herb Weston and his office, your office, Council President, on moving legislation on social issues affecting the community. We'd like to congratulate you on your work in getting that moving, and Mr. Westall as well, and the rest of the council. And we just also would like to present the option for this council to recognize that we have a longstanding taxi ad legislation that has been in legislation for over, since the 50s. We just wouldn't like that to be changed. Us as drivers, with these ads, we use the income to supplement the already income we get, so it gives us room to be more with our families.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Major. Thank you, thank you for coming down. Have a good day. Okay, again, Mr. Jose Dunas. Do we have Jose? Okay, to the city attorney and to the clerk, this concludes multi-public comment and general public comment. I'd like to recognize Ms. Martinez. Ms. Martinez, for a presentation. In fact, Madam Clerk, can we quickly vote on reconsideration on items 3, 4, 5, 17, and 18?
Yes.
Okay, so we're 3, 4, 5, 17, and 18. We're voting on reconsideration. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Now we're actually voting on the items. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
The floor is yours, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you very much, thank you colleagues. Today I stand here to raise awareness of a very critical issue that faces women and particularly mothers. Women of every culture, age, income level, and race can develop prenatal mood and anxiety disorders. Since being elected to the City Council five and a half years ago, I have made working on issues of women and children an absolute priority for me in my office. From raising the minimum wage to committing to building green space for families and creating a safe working environment for working moms, I have chosen to focus on issues that advance the status of women and children. But today I want to highlight the importance of talking about a very critical issue that faces women. Maternal depression is a leading complication of childbirth affecting one out of six women in Los Angeles County. Los Angeles County postpartum depression disproportionately affects Latinas and African-American women. More than one out of five Latinas are affected, and almost one out of three African-American women are affected as well. And because these demographics also tend to be low-income poverty and low-income as well are well documented as risk factors for maternal mental health conditions. What shocked me the most was women with medical for prenatal care has significantly higher risk for developing a level of depression symptoms during and after pregnancy. These are women who already have other risk factors and challenges during their pregnancy and after they give birth. As I began looking into this issue of family leave with my colleague David Rue, I was shocked to learn that 25% of women in the United States go back to work just two weeks after giving birth. It's no wonder why low-income women have some of the highest risk factors for prenatal depression. When you have to worry about having to go make a living and pay your bills and feed your child, you have very little time to deal with your mental well-being. Awareness across our state and our country needs to rely on accessibility. Access to programs shouldn't be limited to your income means. One of the most important ways to address this is to ensure that doctors and medical professions, professionals are screening for postpartum depression. I recognize that so many of us, this is not something that we like to talk about with our families or doctors, but I want to take the shame and the stigma out of talking about this issue, and particularly for women of color. There is still a stigma attached to anything dealing with mental health. We don't like to talk about mental health, period, and sometimes we're actually ashamed of bringing some of these issues up, especially as a mom. There is this fairy tale notion about motherhood, and if I can just share a little bit of my experience, I want to help bring my friends up who are going to talk a little bit more about this issue, the importance of raising awareness. Some of you have heard me mention postpartum depression is part of my experience after having my baby, but very seldom do I get to talk about what that felt like. What it felt like to have delivered a beautiful seven-and-a-half-pound baby girl named Isabel and feeling an absolute detachment to my baby in the hospital. I seldom talk about what it felt like to cry, not because I was happy to have given birth to a healthy baby girl, but because I had absolutely no sense as to what was happening in that delivery room because I was completely detached from having any emotional feeling to my baby girl. And I seldom ever talk about what it felt like to have left the hospital two days after giving birth and feeling an absolute sense of abandonment, an absolute sense of sadness that lasted weeks if not months. And I seldom talk about what it was like to talk to my doctor after knowing that I felt something different, that I wasn't necessarily bonding with my baby girl, and to feel the sense of being dismissed by a professional who thought that what I had was very common, something that we call the baby blues, and that with time it would go away. It did not go away. And with time I began more embarrassed and ashamed to see my friends who had just given birth to their babies and seeing their amazing bond not happening in my family. And so there's a lot of shame attached to the stigma of postpartum depression that we have got to talk about, that we have got to acknowledge, that we have got to support other women going through something like this. You know, nothing brings me more happiness, and those of you who have met my baby Izzy know that she's a 10-year-old vibrant, beautiful, smart, fearless little girl, but every time I think about those six, seven months of not having any kind of connection to her, I feel nothing but sadness and shame of having felt those feelings and not knowing what that was. So I'm here to recognize this mental condition and ask women to seek help and for professionals in the mental health arena to step forward and figure out how to talk about this in this arena. You know, I don't always like to talk about this because it's incredibly difficult, and one day I'm going to have to figure out how to talk to my baby about what I felt like when I had her. As a result of this experience, I think I was so scared to have another baby, and it's why I chose only to have one. But I'm here to talk about this issue because we have got to get out of this way of thinking, of shaming people into thinking that mental health issues are something that should paralyze you for the rest of the life, and it should not be that way. I know that a lot of women that look like me deal with these issues. There's a lot of women in my district who don't necessarily have the means to seek help, and I want to introduce today Karen Flores, who is part of the Maternal Mental Health Now Speakers Bureau, to talk about her experience with prenatal depression.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you so much for taking the time out to proclaim today Maternal Mental Health Day. This is so, so important. I suffered from postpartum depression 19 years ago. I had my beautiful baby 19 years ago. I was having issues during my pregnancy with the baby not growing according to how she was to grow to be at optimal health. I was struggling with that, really upset, really sad, because I had read every book on prenatal care, what to expect when you're pregnant, and for some reason I could not understand why my baby wasn't growing. The doctors explained it, but they didn't explain it in a way that fully made sense to me. So I asked questions of the nurse, and basically when I said to her, "I've done everything I know to do, what do I do now?" Because my baby's not growing, and she said to me, "Do what you've always been doing." And I said, "No, that can't be. That's what got me here." Never was there any mention of maternal mental health or anything, depression, postpartum, prenatal mental health or anything. I never got a screening. So, fast forward, I was on bedrest for eight months, not the whole eight months, four months at a time, and after that I had my baby, maybe hours after I had my baby, the same evening after I had her, I was feeling elated for about maybe an hour. After that, this sadness came upon me that was so debilitating, I could not figure out what was going on. I cried uncontrollably. The nurses took my baby, fed her, took care of her, brought her back the next morning. I was still in this fog that I could not explain to anyone, so the nurse took her back. After that, I was sent home without any mention of mental health, no one wondering why I was crying or what was going on with me, they just sent me home. I got home, my mom had cooked this fabulous meal, family members were there to greet me. I sat at the table and I cried hysterically, and when they said, "What is it?", I could not explain, I could not get the words out. I was trying to tell them what was wrong with me, I didn't know what was wrong with me, so I just continued crying. My mom took me into the room with the baby, I settled down a little bit, she turned around and she said, "Maybe you should try to hold the baby." I didn't know how, I didn't want to, and the thing that scared me the most was that I've worked with infants and toddlers my whole career, I had been an infant toddler teacher for 10 years, and for some odd reason I could not bond with my baby. I didn't want to, that was scary to me. I tried to diaper her, I couldn't do it, I couldn't figure out what to do with the diaper. She was over here, I had the diaper, I didn't know what to do with her. I started crying again. So, I just cried, I continued crying. No one knew what was going on, and we never talked about it. My mom just said, "Go to sleep, you need sleep," so I did, I went to sleep. That was the first two days, three days. It dissipated somewhat, I kept pushing it out, pushing it out, out of my head, trying to just bond with the baby, because I knew I was supposed to, and I really, really wanted to. I felt guilty, I felt ashamed. About a month after that, it felt like it was gone, then all of a sudden, I went to the beach, I used to just go to the beaches for the heck of it to wind down, to pray, and I was pushing my baby in a stroller, and all of a sudden I heard this voice say, "Push the baby over the rocks." And I thought, "No, that's not my mind," and I got really scared because it came again louder and louder, and then all of a sudden the voice, with a command this time, "Push the baby over the rocks." And I thought, "Oh my God," and I started screaming, "I'm going crazy, I'm going crazy." And I don't know if I was screaming in my head necessarily, or if I was just doing it out loud, I couldn't tell, I was panicked, so I pushed the stroller back to the car, running hysterically to my car. I strapped the baby back in her car seat, and after that I sat there sobbing, looking over the Pacific Ocean. We were sitting right in front of the Pacific Ocean, I thought, "Oh my God, what was I thinking?" But it wasn't my thoughts. So I'm here to say, to share this with you, to say that there is still an epidemic of people of this situation. Postpartum depression is not just the baby blues, and we're not talking about it enough. In my community, women are suffering in silence still. I suffered in silence 19 years ago. It should not be this way again today. So that's why I came today to share this with you, because it needs to change. We need to make sure that women are getting prenatal screenings on a regular basis, and screenings that are culturally sensitive, because there are times, I've talked to women in the past year or two, they haven't had screenings. They are basically told, based on your profile, "You're okay." That's not okay, that's definitely not okay, and we have tended to pretend that we don't want to talk about it. There's still, like you said, a stigma, there's still shame associated with not bonding with their baby, but mental illness is a real situation, a real condition that we all need to talk about. So thank you again for listening to me, I appreciate your time. Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Karen. I would like to now introduce Melissa Kobo to say a few words about the Maternal Mental Health Now and how to raise awareness around this critical issue. Melissa?
Thank you. So first of all, I want to thank council member Yuri Martinez and Karen Flores for being so brave in sharing their stories today. It does take courage to speak up, and, you know, when you've gone through that period of being silent for so long, it takes a lot of courage to come out and say it in this public forum and for these stories to be received with support, and I just want to let everyone know that there is no shame, and we support you, and, you know, we appreciate what you've gone through, and we'd like to honor that today with declaring today Maternal Mental Health Awareness Day. Very briefly, I'm with Maternal Mental Health Now, and we're a nonprofit organization that primarily trains healthcare providers to screen and treat maternal mood disorders. It is the most common complication of childbirth, and as was mentioned before, it's rarely ever talked about, and there are several reasons why. You know, one is, of course, the stigma that patients face, but also the healthcare providers sometimes don't know how to broach the subject. So, for one, if they do screen, that's great, but then can they talk about it, or can they foster a trusting relationship with the patient enough? foster a trusting relationship with the patient enough, you know, and to check their implicit biases and to be supportive in a meaningful way that could get the woman who is suffering from a maternal mood disorder into a proper treatment. And, and we know that treatment, like access to counselors, are very, is very scarce. So that's another reason why it's hard to access care. But again, we're working to change that through our advocacy, through our legislative efforts, and our aim is to normalize this conversation, to allow it to be a regular part of obstetric, of obstetric care, because again, it is the most common complication, it should be talked about, and it needs to be discussed. So again, no, new parents should have to suffer in silence, or they, or they need to not be made to feel like a bad parent. And, you know, as, as we've seen, it can lead to psychosis, it can lead moms to commit suicide, and it can lead to these chronic conditions, and it's also, it, it can also have an adverse effect on the development of an infant. We know that when mom is not present, to bond with the baby, there can be some serious developmental issues. So, you know, for all these reasons, you know, public awareness is so vital to improving maternal mental health. And again, thank you to Councilmember Martinez and all the city council for recognizing this issue.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Karen, and Mr. President and colleagues, thank you very much for allowing us to share our stories this morning. I understand that mental health is necessarily within our jurisdiction, but you can just walk out the door every single day and see the epidemic of what mental health issues that are not taken care of, it looks like, on our streets of Los Angeles. And I will continue, as long as I'm able to be given the opportunity to serve the residents of District Six, I will continue to use my platform to advance issues of women and children, particularly those around mental issues, issues of young moms who don't know what to do when these things arise. I just want to tell you, me as a councilwoman, Nuri Martinez, I dealt with those issues. I struggled with them, and we came out okay. My baby girl is now ten years old, and sometimes you'll see her at City Hall, but more than anything, she is the light of our house, a light of our home, and she is the most important thing in my life and the reason why I'm here. Thank you very much.
Now, Ms. Martinez, before you present the resolution, just let me say that it's very moving for us, your colleagues and your friends, to witness you give an emotional It was well done. We stand by you. We love you and all of the other ladies that are dealing with these types of issues. And of course, we want to do what we can. And where it relates to your little girl, ten, she's ten going on like thirty, and, and she is a wonderful young lady. But I would like to recognize Mr. Coretts, if I might, followed by Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Nuri, I had no idea that you had gone through a severe postpartum depression, and you have no idea that I've been very active in this issue, but years ago, when I was in the state legislature, I had a staff person who's still a dear friend of mine who had postpartum depression and realized that virtually nothing had been done by society to deal with it. There was no awareness, she didn't know about it, and she suggested that we attempt some legislation. We looked in the legislative histories, no one had ever done anything on the issue. And hers was not as severe as the worst cases, but we found that in the worst cases, people commit suicide, in the worst cases, they kill their children. As we were going through this, as I recall, there was a very publicized case of a woman who drowned several of her children, so that certainly made it easier to get some of the very modest things we did, which involved encouraging more pre-screening, encouraging doctors, automatically talking about the possibilities of mental health issues before a delivery, so that people would know that that was a possibility, and the woman wouldn't be shocked when she went through what, what you went through. We also got some educational materials put into kits that were handed out. I don't know whether those are still done, it's been almost twenty years. We started, I think, eighteen years ago, when this first came through. So, you know, we, we could do a lot more as a society. I, I don't know if the state has done anything else, if they do anything else. I don't know what the city does, probably very little, but most of what can be done, I remember from working on this way back when, was done voluntarily. So even though we don't have a, a technical standing to make someone do something on, on health, I think there are some things that we could do, working with hospitals and, and doctors and such. So maybe we can work together on, on trying to make something actually happen in, in the city of Los Angeles, because it is terrible when women go through this. I, I'm so sad that all of you have had those difficulties, and if we could do more to educate and do more to pre-screen, it would help the lives of a lot of women, so let's work together on that.
Thank you, Paul. I did not know you had worked on this issue, but I'm not surprised. I'm not surprised, because you're always on the right side of the issues, and you, you're a great guy.
And of course, my wife, some of you know, is a doula in her occasional spare time, so she helps deliver friends and was also very aware of, of this issue. So I would love to work with you on it and see what we can accomplish.
Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Karen. Thank you, Councilwoman Martinez, and the guests that we have today, and also Mr. Coretts and Mr. Wesson. I just wanted to first, thank you for sharing your stories. You know, we pass a lot of laws and we do a lot of policies, but just the person sitting in front of the television watching you talk about what you've been through helps far more people than a lot of the things that we do on a day-to-day basis. So it's a big, big deal, not just to the Sixth Council District, to the whole city, and everybody under the sound of your voices gets helped by seeing another person go through that and over, and, and get to the other side of it. And then second, I just want to close, this is a, a small thing, but your stories really, really spoke to me, because we literally, just five minutes before you all got up there, we were circulating a motion to support a bill in the state to require implicit bias training for all health workers, especially maternal health workers. When you look at the disparities between what happens with African-American and Latina women, but especially African-American women in the maternal process, you know, our, our infant mortality rate and the number of African-American women that die during the childbirth process in this state is atrocious, and the gaps are huge, so this will ask for implicit bias training. You know, I was moved by the subject even before hearing your story, but now even more, more moved. One of my dearest friends, a very accomplished professional, gave birth to a child within the city limits of Los Angeles. And after her child was born, within hours, she reported, she was like, "I feel disconnected, I feel zoned out." And the hospital's response to that was to test her for narcotics abuse and tell her, "If this test comes back positive, we're gonna call Child Protective Services." So this is, and that's right here in LA during our time period, and no one ever brought up to her the topic of postpartum depression, or that this might be connected to, to an illness. And so part of that is bias, and part of that is our discomfort with mental health issues. And so that motion circulating, I think, Mr. Price, Mr. Wesson, Ms. Rodriguez have signed it. We would have had, asked you to sign it, but we're all three on the Rules Committee, so you can't. But, but that'll be going forward, and that's a small thing that we can do, but nothing in comparison to you all telling your stories wherever you can to whoever will listen. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Back to you, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to declare May first as Maternal Mental Health Day in the city of Los Angeles, and present this to our warriors. Thank you very much.
At this point, if you could give us your analysis on items thirty-seven through forty-five?
Thank you, Mr. President. Items thirty-seven through forty-five are all routine settlement matters. Budget and finances considered each of them and recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations as to each, and unless members have questions or concerns, those are all matters that can be considered an open session.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna break these items down into two categories. If we could take up right now, Madam Clerk, items thirty-seven, thirty-eight, forty, and forty-five, if you would read those items.
Yes, Mr. President. On item thirty-seven, in the case entitled Robert Ruski versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $700,000 in settlement of the matter. For item thirty-eight, in the case entitled Mercedes Gray et al. versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $606,250.50 in settlement of the matter. For item forty, in the case entitled Gabriel Gomez Morales versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $1 million in settlement of the matter. And for item forty-five, in the case entitled The Estate of Jose Mendez et al. versus the City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend up to $200,000 in settlement of the matter.
Okay, thank you very much. So on these items, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, forty, and forty-five, would you please open the roll? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes, one no.
Thank you. And now, Madam Clerk, if you could read items thirty-nine, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, and forty-four.
Yes, for item thirty-nine, in the case entitled Vera Shabtai versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $300,000 in settlement of the matter. In the item forty-one, in the case entitled William Butler versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $1 million in settlement of the matter. For item forty-two, in the case entitled Beata Kaminska versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to reject the plaintiff's offer of settlement. And then skipping to item forty-four, the city attorney will speak to forty-three afterwards. For item forty-four, in the case entitled L.A. USD versus the County of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $20,409,659.27 in settlement.
Thank you. On item forty-three, Linderman et al. v. City, the recommendation is to accept the city attorney's recommendation, and no further information needs to be released at this time pursuant to the Brown Act.
Okay, thank you. So let's move on items thirty-nine, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, and forty-four. If you'd please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, thank you. Now let's move to item thirty-six, Ms. Martinez, item thirty-six.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, you know, about eighteen months ago, we started this process while major companies were dealing with reports of major workplace sexual harassment. And so I want to thank Mr. Krikorian, who also introduced a motion to ensure that we were doing some self-reflection here in the city of Los Angeles, and ensuring that we're not failing our employees. And so a sexual harassment discrimination working group was actually put together January of last year, and they actually spent six months looking into this issue, making sure that we're researching best practices and prevent, from preventing sexual harassment and discrimination, but also developing recommendations on how to move forward. And the goal was to really ensure that our policies in place were actually guaranteeing transparency for everyone involved. No one that is working for the city of Los Angeles, no one of our employees should ever wonder whether making a claim of sexual harassment or discrimination, where that claim is at. Not, transparency is important not only for the victim, but also for the accuser. And so one of the goals was to ensure that the person reporting, that we were making it as easy as possible, that when you make a claim, that person understands what the process is, it's made very clear as to who is the supervisor that's going to be overseeing this, and making sure that the personnel department is getting back to folks in a timely manner, that you understand where your claim is at, where in the investigation process you're at, and making sure that there's closure, not only for the victim, but for the accuser. And so the work group has spent six months dealing with this issue. Although I do not sit on the Budget Committee, I will say that it makes perfect sense that we keep an eye on this issue, and that we are providing the Personnel Department with the necessary tools to ensure that they have contacted a hundred percent of the cases that have been filed with them within ten days of the personnel actually receiving the claim. So the absolute obligation of this body is to ensure that we are being notified in terms of making sure that the Personnel Department has the resources, making sure that we are following through with implementation and the recommendations that were put forth by the working group. So I ask for your aye vote.
Thank you. Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Martinez, for your partnership in this really important issue. And I do serve on the Budget Committee, and so I share your budgetary commitment to this issue. Look, colleagues, for many years, this city has been deeply committed to the idea of having a discrimination-free workplace and a harassment-free workplace. And as we look at the number of complaints that we've had, and the number of settlements that we've had relating to sexual harassment in particular over the years, we might look at that relatively low number and say, "Well, that's good news. That shows that our commitment is having an impact." But I think when we scratch the surface and dig a little bit deeper, we realize that no, the, the, the low number of complaints that we have is not good news, because it indicates that there must be people in our workforce of almost forty thousand employees who have concerns, who have complaints, who have feelings of discomfort, who have complaints that they want to make about their, their workplace, but they are afraid to do so. They don't know how to do so. They don't know who to talk to. We have not made it as easy as we need to make it for people to be able to bring complaints and concerns to the surface so that we can address them in a, in an important, rational way, a way that actually achieves resolution of these matters. So as Ms. Martinez outlined, we have spent months and months working on developing the recommendations before you. I think this agenda breaks the record for the longest list of recommendations in a city council agenda. It takes up several pages. If you'll look at them carefully, you'll see that the working group has gone into best practices in the area of policy dealing with sexual harassment, improvements to processes so that the complaint process is as user-friendly as it can be, training, critically important as we see again and again in workplaces throughout this city, where we think that people should be implementing the policies that we've adopted, and yet, year after year, that's not happening. We see supervisors who are not doing, who are not complying with the policies that this council and the mayor, and previous mayors have set over the years. And then finally, investing in technology to, again, make this as user-friendly as we can, as employee-friendly as we can. So the recommendations that go into great length and great detail, and if we enact these recommendations today, this city will really be on the cutting edge of the entire country in ensuring that we have a workplace that is as receptive to dialogue about problems in the workplace as is humanly possible, so that we can ensure that no employee of this city ever feels like they are unable to do something about harassment or discrimination. These recommendations will ensure that that's not the case. And as I ask for your aye vote, I also want to give a shout out to my Policy Director, Anna Hovasapian, who has been, played a critical role in this working group and in the mo, creation of the motion in the first place right from the beginning. I don't normally do that, but thank you, Anna, because you've really been a leader in this. So with that, I respectfully ask for your aye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian, and thank you so much, Ms. Martinez. Let's prepare to vote on this issue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
All right, that is approved. Mr. Buscaino, item nineteen. Mr. Buscayino, item nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, the item before you, with the unanimous support of the Public Works Committee, thank you Chairman Blumenfeld for shepherding this through, we will be renaming a portion of Eubank Avenue between Anaheim Streets and Alameda Street to George Delatorre Jr. Avenue. George Delatorre is known as a well-known civic and businessman in Wilmington, California. He passed away in 2009 after dedicating a lifetime to his community, touching the lives of so many. He was born in February 21st, 1935, into humble beginnings in East Side Wilmington to a Mexican-American father and Japanese-American mother. Mr. Delatorre built a business empire on Mexican cuisine known as Juanita's Foods. George Delatorre was a graduate of Banning High School. He took over the family business in 1968 when his father passed away. Mr. Delatorre transformed Juanita's into a menudo canning business and set the standard internationally for his product. Today, Juanita's is a third-generation family-owned business making authentic Mexican products, keeping alive Mexican culinary traditions across generations. Juanita's employed hundreds of locals over the course of the business lifetime. Mr. Delatorre believes strongly that the future of any community lies in the hands of its youth. He contributed generously to youth programs in Wilmington, including Banning High School, the YMCA, Boys and Girls Club, Wilmington Optimist Clubs, and beyond. And Juanita's business continues to donate menudo to troops who are serving abroad. He has, he also contributed to lasting programs and developments like the Wilmington Community Advisory Committee and the Wilmington Industrial Park. His leadership and dedication were catalysts for the development of the Banning Landing Center and the creation of the statue of the Wilmington's pioneer, Phineas Banning, the father of the Los Angeles Harbor. So it's appropriate that the City of Los Angeles rename Eubank Avenue, where Juanita's Food is headquartered, to George Delatorre Avenue in honor of one of the most influential individuals who shaped modern-day Wilmington. So this renaming, the item before you, will enable all people who live, work, visit Wilmington to recognize the street as a landmark to George Delatorre Jr.'s legacy. So I ask for your aye vote. Thank you very much, colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Buscayino. On this item, members, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tab, you like the vote?
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, so, Madam, in fact, Mr. Sacks, we closed general public comment earlier, but I'm gonna let you have your one minute, but you have to come up right now. Sergeant, if you would, uh... Give him one minute.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks, and I appreciate the city attorney bringing in a Brown Act on one of the other items, as we follow the Brown Act along, the entitlement of speaking in front of the council. I appreciate the fact that you talked about harassment in the workplace, you just had a settlement. Did you realize when Mr. Garcetti's, Mayor Garcetti's dad had his court case in the Supreme Court in 2000, and I thought it was 2008, it's actually 2006? It was a case about a whistleblower in the county who wanted to have a, it was assistant DA who wanted to have a, who wanted to name a sheriff's deputy because he lied in a case, and Mr. Garcetti took the case to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court ruled for the county that the county is allowed to lie because it's in their best interest.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Thank you very much. Mr. Sacks, thank you. Mr. Sacks, Mr. Sacks, thank you. No, Mr. Sacks, I gave you an accommodation, I will not do it again. Okay, all right. That brings us there, Madam Clerk.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They're posted, they're referred. Announcements, members, announcements. Mr. Root?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I have a very special announcement today, and I stand here along with two individuals from the L.A. County Department of Public Social Services to declare May 2019, May 2019 as CalFresh Awareness Month. In the city council, I've introduced resolutions in support of CalFresh SNAP and a Fair Farm Bill to support the funding of healthy foods for low-income residents. I'm happy to partner with the county to raise more awareness about CalFresh and reach out to those residents and families who are eligible but not aware of the resource. I have my former colleague and good friend, James Bolden, here.
Yeah, I see him.
Yeah. But also, I'd like to introduce Carlos Portillo, CalFresh manager of the L.A. County Department of Public Social Services, to speak more about CalFresh Awareness Month in the county and the city.
Good morning, council members. My name is Carlos Portillo, and on behalf of the County of Los Angeles and its Department of Public Social Services, I want to thank you for providing this opportunity to share with you what the County of Los Angeles is doing to alleviate food insecurity and help feed individuals and families. We truly appreciate the City of Los Angeles participating in our annual CalFresh Awareness Month campaign. Food insecurity is a serious issue that affects many residents in Los Angeles County and also Los Angeles City, and enrolling in CalFresh can alleviate that worry for many residents here in Los Angeles County. There are over 1 million folks receiving CalFresh benefits in Los Angeles County. Of those 480,000 are here in the City of Los Angeles, but we estimate that about 376,000 individuals can also benefit for this program, but they're not participating currently right now. We look forward to continuing partnering with the City of Los Angeles. We want to thank the City of Los Angeles Food Family Source Centers for their efforts and commitment to continue connecting families and individuals to this program there, being very vital in the community to help them apply for CalFresh benefits. And I also want to thank the city leadership for, and the city community-based organizations that work to give access to many CalFresh participants to farmers' markets. As we know now, almost all of the farmers' markets here in the City of Los Angeles are accepting CalFresh as a form of payment, giving them access to healthy fruits and vegetables. There is many ways that people can apply for CalFresh benefits. Now we have a call, click, or coming. People can call to our call center to apply for CalFresh benefits. The number is 866-613-3777. They can also apply online through getcalFresh.org website, and they can also log into dpssbenefits.gov and it's open seven days a week, 24 hours, for people to apply from the comfort of their home, or they can come to any of the offices that we have throughout Los Angeles County. In closing, I would like to thank you again for this opportunity to talk about CalFresh Awareness Month. I know that it's very important for people here in the city. We embrace your resolution and we help, to help express the war about CalFresh awareness and the value it brings to the helping individuals and families move forward to self-sufficiency, to whether we can make a difference in the lives of these individuals and families. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Carlos. Thank you, James. Thank you, Mr. President. And I just want to say, in our great nation, in our great city, the fact that we still have food insecurity is a travesty. You heard here in the City of Los Angeles, we already have close to half a million people taking advantage of CalFresh, but another 300,000, 400,000-plus who are still eligible but not taking advantage. So simply just go to, you go to the county 211, that's an easier number to remember, 211, and they could connect you with the websites and phone numbers that Carlos just mentioned, so you could apply for CalFresh. So anyone out there listening, please take advantage of this great program.
Thank you, Mr. Root. Any other announcements? No more announcements? If we could all rise? If we could all rise for adjourning motions? I'd like to recognize Mr. Marquis Harris-Dawson.
So much, Mr. Chair and members. It is another very, very sad occasion for those of us in South L.A. and throughout the country, that we ask that this body adjourn in the memory of one John Daniel Singleton. John was born and raised in South Los Angeles, the son of two professionals. He went on to USC, majored in cinematic arts. He pledged the fraternity Capo Alpha Psi. Graduated from there in 1990, and just a year after his graduation, he released in July the seminal film, Boys in the Hood, which was not just his coming-of-age story, but the coming-of-age story for so many of us that grew up during the crack cocaine epidemic, and not just in Los Angeles, but in big cities across the country. He filmed in South Los Angeles, and he filmed our neighborhoods the way that they actually are, with some affluence and some poverty, a little bit of trouble, and a whole lot of love. He always worked with community members when he was shooting in South Los Angeles. For Boys in the Hood, he was nominated at a very, very young age for Best Director and Best Original Screenplay. At that time, he was the youngest person to ever be nominated for an Oscar in those categories. He went on to do several other films, including Higher Learning, Poetic Justice, Shaft, Baby Boy, Too Fast and Too Furious, Four Brothers, and Hustle, and Flow. He was responsible for providing opportunities to lots of African-American actresses and actors that we now know, Sir Regina King, who just got an Oscar this last time. Her first three movies, and she says this, her first three movies, the only person that would hire her was John Singleton, and she played a key role. And he worked with Angela Bassett, Laurence Fishburne, Taraji Behenson, Nia Long, Morris Chestnut, Ice Cube. Also, his first three movies were with John Singleton. Tyrese Gibson's first movie was with John Singleton, Cuba Gooding Jr. as well. Before he passed, I know he was working a lot with our office and with the Office of Councilmember Sadio in filming the series Snowfall, which was a look back on the 1980s in South Los Angeles and the drug trade and the war on drugs. And so he is very, very deeply and sorely missed. Mr. Singleton, at the age of fifty-two, 51, passed away from us. He is survived by five children and other immediate family members.
Mr. Sadio?
You know, we are all indebted to Mr. Singleton and his family. We grieve his loss. He was the consummate storyteller, and so the stories that he told were the stories that were very authentic. They were about Los Angeles, they were about who we are as a community, and policy decisions we made. His stories, Boys in the Hood, more recently, this incredible series called Snowfall, talking about policy decisions that were made and the unintended consequences that took place. And then he tells those stories. We talk about these as, all of us, as policymakers, as geeks, as people who are engaged in this practice, but he turned that into a narrative and into a story that was very authentic and impacted people in their daily lives, and he could just be so authentic. If you look at Snowfall, you will find the most attention to detail on the dress that people wear, like exactly what people were wearing, where they got the shirts from, all the stuff, the Fred Perry's, the streets, right, everything. And it's just fascinating when you think of storytellers and people who are able to convey our lives in the city, and he was the greatest. And so, in this job of ours, we always get to meet great people, and so recently, with our work with their office, we got to meet him, spent some time with him. Recently, we spent a Friday evening with him as we were preparing to launch Snowfall. They do a lot of shooting here in L.A., a lot of shooting in Chinatown, and he's an incredible guy. And so we had this conversation about, you know, how did he get all the detail? And as was just stated, you know, his cousin, who had a lot of these youth experiences and street experiences, was his consultant, and tuned them in to exactly what people wore, how they wore it, where they purchased it from, what was going on. He was, I got to know him just for a short time personally, but what an incredible, incredible human being. We've all grown up with his storytelling. What a giant, what a, what a loss. And so I'm not happy, but compelled to join you in this effort.
Well, thank you, Mr. Sadio and Mr. Harris-Dawson for your eloquence on this issue. The only thing that I would like to add on, in fact, let me recognize Mr. Price.
In mourning the loss of a great storyteller. I mean, he was really able to still tell the stories with the kind of precision and kind of detail that made you know that he understood the environment and certainly reflected it on film. You know, he was inspired certainly by Spike Lee, that certainly brought attention to Brooklyn and is due to write Thing, and Singleton was able to bring that same kind of focus to South L.A. in a kind of passion and detail and feeling that had never been expressed before. And he was the real trailblazer for just a whole generation of actors who have, who are with us today, actors and actresses who are with us today. And so we just applaud his presence. He appealed to viewers across the age groups, across racial groups, those who knew a lot about the streets and those who didn't know anything about the streets. His films were able to be easily digested, understood, and enjoyed. And so I just share with my colleagues and the whole community, the loss of a great storyteller, a great Los Angelino, someone who was really authentic, wasn't afraid to display that authenticity, and who really was an inspiration for us all. So thank you.
So again, I want to thank Mr. Price, Mr. Sadio, Mr. Harris-Dawson. And at the end of the day, members, it's God that makes the call on when our time is set to end, but I just want to remind everyone, if you have a doctor and you trust your doctor, and they suggest that you take medication, you should take that medication. There's a lot of speculation as to how this man died at the young age of 51. So I just want to say that there are prescription medications that can keep you alive. If you have a doctor, you trust your doctor, take your medications. And with that said, that will close the journey. No, no, there are more. I'll go to Mr. Price. Oh, and on that, let's make that a four signature, Mr. Sadio, Mr. Harris-Dawson, Mr. Price, and myself. Mr. Price?
Thank you again, Mr. President, colleagues. It's with a heavy heart that I rise today to adjourn in the memory of not one, but two of our angels from the City of Los Angeles, Marlena and Amy Lorenzo. You may recall that last month, the Lorenzo sisters were struck while crossing the street on their way to school. Marlene passed away on April the 4th, and Amy passed away April the 22nd. They were from a large and loving family with humble and supportive parents. The girls are remembered as great sisters to their five siblings and outstanding students at Clinton Middle School in my district. They are survived by their parents, Angelina and Francisco Lorenzo, a host of siblings, a large extended family of friends and neighbors. Their absence was deeply affected, has deeply affected their fellow students at Clinton Middle School, so I ask that we keep not only their family in your thoughts, but prayers for your classmates and their friends as well.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Buscayino?
President, colleagues, I ask that we rise in adjourn in memory of Antoinette Zankich, born June 12th, 1949. She passed away April 23rd. Deeply mourned in the passing of Antoinette, who was a loving mom, nana, and sister, daughter to Joe and Mary, Kalenda. Antoinette Kalenda Zankich, born June 12th, lost her courageous battle with cancer. She fought with grace and lifting spirit and strengthen, strength, rather. She will be forever in the hearts of those that she loved. She will be forever in the hearts of those that she loved, survived by her daughter Kristen, son-in-law Mike Collins, sons Vince, daughter-in-law Danielle Zankich, and son Drew Zankich, and her six cherished grandchildren, Zachary, Devin, Ryan, Danica, Dylan, and Jolie. Her sister Donna Gualeni, niece Gina Hanky, Otto Hanky, Mary Kate and Jenna Hanky, nephew Joe Gualani, Jane, Joey, Maddie, and Jack Gualani, and countless loving friends and supportive family. Viewing will be held this Sunday at McNerdu's on May fifth, and funeral service on Monday, May sixth, with the burial following at Green Hills. In lieu of flowers, donations may be made to either the American Cancer Society or the Special Olympics. Antoinette Zankich, may she rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other, any additional adjourning motions? Then, members, this council meeting is adjourned.
I'm Dr. Shen. I'm acupuncturist and a herbal expert. When I was eighteen years old, after graduating high school, I followed my grandfather to learn herbal medicine and acupuncture because less side effect and it works better. And more and more people like herbal and acupuncture. The TC herbs in the house, we offered us about a thousand different herbs, shipping from the port of La Cendres imported from China. Some herb is for the relieve the pain, some herbal for the, like a detox. This jin sheng is improve the body energy, enhance your immune system. Heisenberg is good for the cardiovascular health, so reduce the balance, the cholesterol, circulation of blood. We also have herbal capsules, herbal tea, herbal essential oil, and herbal tablets, pills. Shin Clinic is treated for patients with acupuncture, herbal medicine, and tui na, we call it Chinese massage, and a